Janet.
Hi Janet. Oh, we can't hear you.
Hello Erin, Robert.
Good to see you.
You look better.
You've recovered well.
Do I look better?
You definitely do.
Oh man. Once I get my glasses, I'll be great.
And panelists will all show up on the screen. But you could. Thanks. Some are applicants.
Not really.
You can be.
That's okay.
That was me. I could make the room.
Yeah, we talked about that.
I tried to do it on the back end. You can only have one post. And the count is under Maria, so I'm the post. But while I'm here, I can make the room the current post. Let's try.
That's okay.
Just see what it does.
Is John Dusak coming in?
Yes, I think he was coming in person.
We need another chair.
So Jeff.
We can just scoot over.
I can slide him down here.
We can go either way.
We can just scoot over.
Which way are you coming?
We're coming your way.
Okay.
Here's John.
And here he is. Six fifty-nine.
I think we're ready, Erin. Okay, we're recording. Great. Welcome everyone. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. We have one public hearing tonight, so I want to take just a few minutes to review the process for public hearings in the current hybrid format of our meetings. During the public hearing, the applicant will be invited to present the application, explaining to the commission and others present what is being requested. The applicant or staff will share all application materials on the screen as needed. Comments of town agencies will be read for each application if there aren't any. There will be clarifying questions from the commissioners. Then there will be an opportunity for clarifying questions from attendees. For Zoom attendees, please raise your hand through the Zoom platform and wait to be called on and unmuted. As this public hearing must be recorded, attendees will state their names and addresses before asking their questions. Next, those who wish to support the application may come forward, and then those who oppose the application may come forward. Again, it is necessary for speakers to identify themselves each time they speak by stating their name and address. The applicant will then have an opportunity to address any questions or concerns raised by the public or commissioners. And once the public hearing is closed, the applicant is free to leave or remain for the balance of the regular meeting during which the commission will try to reach a decision on each application. Each applicant will be notified in writing as to the decision of this commission and has a right to appeal to Superior Court if desired. Decisions of this meeting are available the day after the meeting by calling the Land Use Department at two oh three, two four five, five six, three one, after nine AM. All actions taken tonight by the commission will be by roll call. All commissioners and staff will identify themselves for the record before speaking. Seated this evening are members Mike Bugda, John Dusa, John Morgan, Bob O'Connor, Janet Heckinpah attending by Zoom, Bob Reinhardt, Andy Rubin, and myself, Carol Snow, Chair. Staff present this evening is Erin Mannix, Town Planner. This meeting is livestreamed on YouTube and will be made available on the town website for viewing. Additionally, I would like to ask that we treat each other respectfully throughout the meeting. And the Town Planner will now read the legal notice. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, will hold a public hearing on Thursday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, seven PM, in Meeting Room A, Town Campus, Eight Campus Drive, Madison, Connecticut. This is a hybrid meeting, and attendees may also join via Zoom webinar through either the webinar link or call and information below. The webinar ID is nine one five, eight one nine six, six seven three five. Password is four five two, one three eight. The following application will be heard. Number twenty-four dash zero three, one oh five, one oh seven, and one eleven Bradley Road, map forty-eight, lots forty-six and forty-seven. Zone is D Downtown District. The owners are George C. Field Company Incorporated, Viola Madison Realty LLC. The applicant is Vista Life Innovations, Inc., site plan review and major downtown village district application for facade improvements and various site improvements, including parking, sidewalks, lighting, signage, fencing, and landscaping. Copy of this application is available for inspection in the Land Use Office. Further details on how to participate in the webinar are posted on the Town of Madison website, www.madisonct.org. All written correspondence can be submitted to the Land Use Department via email, landuse@madisonct.org. Dial two zero three, two four five, five six, three one for assistance. Date in Madison, Connecticut, this twenty-third day of January, twenty twenty-four. Carol Snow, Chair. This was published once in the source on February first, twenty twenty-four, and once on February eighth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Erin.
Sure.
Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for twenty-four dash oh three? Second? Reinhardt? On favor? Great, okay. Again, I'd like to come forward. Oh, right, thank you. So John Moran is recusing himself.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Helen Bosch, and I'm the CEO of Vista Life Innovations. Thank you for listening to this and considering this application tonight. What we are about to do, and just to kind of give you a little bit of history about Vista and who we are, is we are a nonprofit organization that supports adults with disabilities to be able to help them live with independence and belonging within our shoreline communities. We kind of provide services all up and down the shoreline, and we have two main campuses. We have a campus in Westbrook, and if you know where the Westbrook Congregational Church is, right downtown, behind it in Oak Clinton Road, it's kind of a white sprawling campus there that houses our dormitory and our education and training center. But we also, equally important, have a campus here in Madison. And the campus here in Madison, while it doesn't have any residences, it has three buildings that we use to provide training, counseling, services, as well as a full operating business to employ our members. We started, just kind of a little history, is we started working with the George C. Field Group back over twenty years ago now, when we started renting the one oh five Bradley Road building. From there, in two thousand and twelve, we took, we kind of expanded and moved into the one oh seven Bradley Road building. So both of those, we have had long-term leases on those properties. And then most recently, two thousand and seventeen, we also moved into one eleven Bradley Road, where we are currently operating one of our businesses that I just described. We have recently negotiated new long-term leases on all three buildings so that we can remain residents in this town. And in that location, it's a wonderful location for our members because it's close to town. The bus stops right there, and we really want to see ourselves settle into that location. And by doing so, what we really want to do is to kind of upgrade the appearance. We want it to look, number one, consistent with all of the buildings looking like a campus. We want to be consistent with the downtown area of Madison, which is kind of that New England, kind of small-town look. And we want a place that feels really good to our students and our members who come there every day, most of them taking the public bus. If you've ever been on Bradley Road at about nine o'clock in the morning, you'll see the bus stop. You see lots of people come out. And so we want the property to look, the quality of service that we provide there. And so we've been working with, and I should introduce to you, to the team of folks that we have back here. First of all, I think Mike Ott, who's a site reviewer, is on Zoom or on the line. Rick Viola, Viola Realty, Robin Westercamp, who's a Vice President of Business Ops with us at Vista, John Cunningham, who's the landscape architect, and T. Clark, George C. Field Company. We've been working with them for quite some time to kind of create this vision, this campus vision. And I think that's what you're going to hear tonight. And we're really excited about it. We think that it would be, it's great for the town and for that area on Bradley Road. The sidewalks and everything kind of enhance the look, and I think that we can make it be a really nice, kind of just a really nice standout landmark in that area for living and learning for adults with disabilities. So thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to put up the landscape plan?
You want the landscape? You want your colored rendering, John?
I think that's probably the easiest one to follow. Good evening. My name is John Cunningham on our TEC Landscape Design located at sixty-two Wall Street, Madison, Connecticut.
Round the corner.
Yes. I've actually done the work. I've worked with the field company for the last thirty years. I've done all the work for the Violas also for the last thirty years. So we're just redoing the main, as Helen said, the main goal in all the work here is to make this feel like more of a campus. So maybe slide it up. We don't need, we don't need the plant list. There you go. So you can see that. Good.
I don't have my mouse, John.
One oh five, one oh seven, and one eleven. Okay? I think the landscape is probably one of the biggest elements. I'm trying to tie everything together. Okay, so a couple little things. Our parking stays the same, but we are reducing the amount of asphalt on the property. So our impervious coverage has gone down. Our septic stays the same. Our drainage system stays the same. Nothing is really changing on the buildings. I'm going to give, I'm going to give it over to T. Clark when I finish. He'll discuss window changes, some color changes, but the footprint of the buildings are staying the same. We're putting in a new walkway system that's going to lead over to also new pavement. The entire project's going to be repaved. Okay, so if you can picture this, that the project's going to be new asphalt, dark in color. The walkways are going to be light in color. So the members know exactly to stay on the walkways. They're going to get to a crosswalk that's going to be the same striping as what's on the streets in Madison. So they can move from building to building, knowing how to, how to get, how to go through the whole thing. On the graphics on my plan, these green circles, existing tree, existing tree, existing tree, existing tree, new street trees. We've taken down the crabs that are in front of Bradley, one eleven Bradley Road. I've used a variety called Occum Cherry. So it's an upright cherry. It's a little bit tighter than Quanzon, a little bit smaller grower. I think it'd be a nice addition along Bradley Road. We've left the locust out back. We've left the existing hedge maple. I've used hedge maple on Bradley and Wall Clarity, on a number of the buildings on Wall Street and Bradley Road. So I'm suggesting a new one here to tie back in the same foliage. This little slashed green bed is a planting bed. Picture this, that most of the plant material is probably going to be twenty-four to thirty inches high. Nothing much taller than that. There are some pieces of spirea that might be a little bit taller along the front road, but we want, we want visibility as imperative that the members, when they're moving around, especially to a new bus, you know, shelter here. This is going to be a main area where the members get to to take the bus. We want them to be able to see any cars moving throughout the property, which I think is really important also. We're also, we're also suggesting a woodpost metal rail fence, which is two purposes. Soften some of the cars from the road along with the planting beds. Also keep someone from wandering from the parking areas back out towards the sidewalk. It starts here and ends down here. We have an existing sign here at one oh five. We're matching the same signage, and I think Erin can put that up if there are any questions on it. I think we have all the samples in the, on the town record, correct?
In the ACCA packet.
Yeah, we have a second sign that's going to be exactly like the first sign back on one eleven also. Our trash is moving from here to here. It'll be enclosed. Okay? The area where the trash was is now going to be an outdoor area. There are going to be picnic tables back here and also some raised planters. The members want to do some gardening, so we figured this was the best area for it. Even though we use all the parking here, the rear of one oh five is usually just used for outdoor activities. There's not really much parking going on back there. So here, here in the front, but not really out and back. So we thought that was a good area for it. Existing fencing on the back of the property stays as is. There are some, these green areas here is asphalt right now. These are the areas that we, I just spoke, would be removed and returned to a green element for the, for the site. One last little thing, I think, which is a nice idea, is all the entrance ways are going to have the same plant material. That's the red. It's a dwarf form of Phophagilia. So it's a small, it's about this tall. It's got a fragrant white flower. It's deciduous. It stays compact, and that will be the entrance to all the different buildings and all the different exits. So it's really just going to be a redo of the entire landscape parking walkway area. Oh, I should say, the walkway is going to be a poured product. Either going to be, it's probably going to be concrete. We might move to stamped concrete, a little bit more money. We're still deciding that. It's probably not going to be a unit paper, but all, as I mentioned, all the walkways will match throughout the whole project. Any questions? Yep.
You referenced a new shelter on the corner right there. Is, can you describe what that's going to look like? And is it going to be clear? I'm just concerned, is it going to be someplace where, not the members, but town kids hang out or other people hang out?
It's a state, it's a state bus shelter. So the state decides what it is. It's clear glass the whole way with a metal roof. It's not real large. It happens to fit right here. We're probably going to pick the town sidewalk up. The property line is right where my scale is. It runs right along the sidewalk. So we're probably going to pick the poured concrete, which is along the sidewalk, and probably run it underneath the shelter.
Definitely. I was thinking, thank you.
Yes.
Ingress and egress for virginity be equals remains the same.
Remains the same. That's probably a good question. This, this entrance will have both ways. You can leave and pull in, you can leave, you can pull into the built property and leave. The same with this here. This is just leaving the, leaving the property. Because this is one-way traffic along one eleven. Hasn't changed, okay? But none, none of the curb cuts or anything else have really changed. Anything else?
Is this a good time to show us the fence?
If we have it in the ACCA packet. Wouldn't it be from the?
The fence, then I have the ACCA packet.
I think it's in the.
The overview?
Yes, it is in the ACCA packet. It's a, it's probably going to be a white post.
And it has metal rail?
Two metal rails.
Yeah.
So it, it's like a finished split rail fence, but instead of the wood rail, it's a, it's going to be probably a two and a half inch round piece of probably galvanized metal.
Yeah. I can show this. Thanks to others.
Great.
Into a composite boat?
Probably, yes. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not a, I mean, it's not going to look exactly like that, but this kind of shows you this will be some type of composite, and there'll be two metal rails. The plant material, if you left this up for a second, Erin, the ground cover would probably be to about here. The additional material that's out in front, I think there needs to be something more than just the ground cover. The additional material would probably be to here, but probably nothing above the top of the fence. So it softens the cars. It breaks the front grille of the cars a little bit, but it doesn't hide the cars. I think the last thing we want to do is have a piece of plant material this tall. I think this is about the right size back out in front.
And will the plant, the planting kind of discourage people from sitting on it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a low juniper. You ever sat on a low juniper? All right, so. No, it's, it's not pleasant when you fall into them. But the, the ground cover is going to be a low juniper out front. And the reason, I've used it at a number of places here in town. It's drought tolerant. It's poor cell tolerant. Once it establishes, you cannot kill it. And you're not going to want to walk through it. So we don't want people walking in the beds, which is one reason why all the plant material, if you looked at the landscape plan, why all those beds are full. Good?
Thank you.
Thank you, and maybe the building materials for T.
Good evening. T. Clark from the George C. Field Company. If possible, the review of building.
For copies, sure. I'm going to.
Yeah, if you could bring it right up. Perfect. This, I'll review the exterior, proposed exterior building improvements with you. Yeah, next page is John's landscape plan. And then this is one oh five Bradley Road and a nice rendering of what we're proposing to, to, to the exterior of the building. You can see a new asphalt shingle roof, cobblestone gray in color to be installed. Do final siding, flagstone color, and colonial white trim. The exterior one oh five. Next, one oh seven, same matching cobblestone gray asphalt shingle roof. We're going to paint the existing flatboard, wood flatboard siding, sterling gray. And we'll install a new board and batten skirt underneath those lower-level windows around the perimeter of the whole building. And matching colonial white trim. And on Mr. Viola's building, proposing to fresh coat of paint, right? On the existing siding, flagstone color, matching colonial white paint.
I think just to recall from ACCA, this is the same gray as one oh five. So the center building is just set back in a little bit lighter.
Right, so the two outer buildings have very matching colors, and the middle building would be complementary to. Yeah. Very good.
Looks good. Thanks.
Sure. You're welcome.
Can show the lighting.
Oh, yes.
Someone's right out. Sorry about that.
The lighting, I have the photometrics plan. If we go back to.
Well, here's the detail.
Want to go to, you want to go to the photometrics plan?
Yeah, but what it looks like.
Okay, so. This is the light we've selected. It's a, it's going to be on a twelve-foot post. Okay, it's a full cutoff. Okay, it's an LED, it's below three thousand K. Okay, and if we go to the photometrics plan, I won't go through all the different areas. There are probably ten different posts. We're also using that same fixture as a bollard. Because everyone knows when you came in, these front doors, that's a light bollard outside. It's going to be about this high. Same fixture up top, same full cutoff, but probably fifty-four inches tall. They are going to be by the sidewalks. There's about four of those, if I remember correctly. Yeah, so. Fifty-four, forty-eight. I can't remember what it was. It's one of the, it's one or the other. It's not thirty-six, it's not twenty-four. It's probably about this tall. If you looked at all this, zero wash off the property line, which you want to have, okay? And the fixtures themselves are probably the Xs where they are.
I'm very real, Mr. Fixer.
Under three thousand K, but I don't know.
Temperature, lumens, intensity, brightness.
It's on, it's on the spec sheet in the town. Yep. We, they, I'm on the design review committee here in town. We've gone through a lot of lighting. We usually like the illumination to be around three thousand K. I'm not a lighting expert. I don't know what the exact thing is. Oh, okay. Okay.
It's a warm color.
Yes, correct, yeah. I can find out and let Erin know if you, and she can send it to the board.
Janet, you have a question? You talking to you?
Yes, sorry. John, is, are these buildings right across from the Bradley apartments?
Yes.
It, will these lights stay on twenty-four seven?
No, we're, we talked about that in ACCA. We're probably going to have, you could have people working in the buildings till maybe eight o'clock. So we discussed either a nine or ten o'clock shut-off time for all lights. Because there's no sense in having them on when no one's there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on the lights?
We're good.
Okay, I'll check my record and see if I have any.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it for your presentation?
Yes.
Have any questions from attendees? See any hands raised?
I don't see any hands raised. Either location.
Right. Person. Any questions from the audience? Good.
I did share with the commission in my staff report, which is online as well, and in the record, the guidelines for the DVD. That's the reason this is for you as a public hearing. It's considered a major alteration. Not to, to read everything. As is John indicated, I will review the application and give favorable recognition as proposed.
Very good, thank you. Mike, that.
Right, and, but they're, they're sort of gaslight in appearance, right? So the, the light will spread out and all.
And they're downward facing, right?
Or is it downward?
Yes, correct. A full cutoff fixture, the, no, no illumination above one hundred and eighty degrees. So light is all down. These lights, it was somebody, it's lighting it all.
That's what I need to know. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
The three thousand temperature was also recommended by.
ACCA.
Yes, by ACCA.
Warm and low. And off after ten. Perfect. Any other questions or thoughts? Not that I have a motion that we could close the public hearing. Discussion about it. Favor. Move to deliberation. I have a scrape. I think, you know, it works in terms of the downtown village district. Yeah, I think it's, it's really a nice improvement. And the functionality, I think, will be improved as well, so that's great. Yeah. The other comments?
You guys have done serious work on this.
Yeah.
Thanks for the investment.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, yeah, thank you. Okay, um. If there are no further discussions, I think we can just go ahead and make a motion. Want to read, John Ducey, do you want to read the following draft resolution? Do you have it?
Inside of here.
It's part of our package.
Okay, the Madison Plan of Road Commission approves. Application 24-03, 105, 107, 111 Bradley Road, map 48, lots 46 and 47. Zone D-Downtown. Owner, George C Field Company Incorporated, Viola Madison Mill T L C. Applicant Vista Life Innovations Incorporated. Site plan review, major downtown village district application for sound improvements and road side improvements. Parking, sidewalks, lighting, signage, fencing, and landscaping as shown on a set of plans. Vista Madison's campus improvements, Bradley Road and Old 79 Madison, Connecticut. Civil permit drawings by Summer Hill's Civil Engineers and Land Surveyors. Special Corporation, dated January 2024 sheets C0.1-C3.3. Sidewalk details, 14 sheets total. Vista Life Innovations Landscape Plan LP-1 by TDC Landscape. Design Incorporated, dated January 5th, 2024. Lifetime by Phoenix Lighting conditions for the following conditions. One, that the zoning enforcement officer be notified in this 48 hours prior to commencement of integrated activity. Two, that all erosion and sedimentation controls be installed prior to any site disturbance. Maintain the duration of construction activities until the site is sufficiently stabilized to satisfaction of the zoning enforcement officer. In the event that changes to the approved plans are required as a result of other HCC permitting to support the proposed activity. Madison Plan and Zoning Commission reserves the right to review said changes and their required modification of this approval. This approval is made based upon the finding that the standards, prerequisites, conditions specified by the regulations have been met. Public convenience and welfare will be substantially served. Perpetual use of neighboring properties will not be substantially or permanently abused. Proposed use is important to the comprehensive plan and downtown village district regulations. Effective date of this approval is February 9th, 2024.
John? Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Approved, thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we have two pending applications tonight. The next agenda item number is 24-01. Cherry Lane, map 26, lots 37-1, 44 and 45. This is an R2 zone. The owner is a Madison Country Club. Applicant is Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates Site Plan Review Modification and Coastal Site Plan Review to construct a 10 by 20 foot accessory restroom building, associated utilities, septic system, and site.
Todd Anderson from Anderson Engineering Surveying Associates is just coming over now. He's joining via Zoom.
There we go.
Hi, Todd.
Good evening, everyone. Todd Anderson from Anderson Engineering Surveying Associates. 1054 Boston Post Road in Guilford. Here on behalf of the Madison Country Club. Also, on the Zoom call is Ken Papa. If there are any, uh, he's an attorney for the club. So if there are any issues that needs his input, he is available as well. But I think we can handle it without him. So the club is desiring to put in a restroom facility about on the halfway point of a full round of golf on their course. Currently, they use portable toilets, not in this area, but in the close proximity thereof. But, uh, they have been, uh, getting input from members for a while now. They would like to have a permanent facility. Currently, there is a water station within about 20 feet of the proposed restroom facility. So this restroom facility would have, uh, two toilet facilities. A men's and women's room and in the middle, an ice cooler and water station that would not need daily replenishment during the summer months. It would have water being supplied from the water company on Cherry Lane with electric coming from Cherry Lane as well. Of course, both underground and also have a septic system to the south of the building. We have chosen this spot for this facility because there is an existing mound of fill adjacent to the cart paths. This building is in between two Ts and fairways and greens. So it is the least impact for the playing of golf on the property. And also dug into the hillside, so it is shielded from most of the neighbors and from the view of Cherry Lane. Really is the best place for this facility to be. And it's right near an existing paved cart path. We propose a little parking area there to the north of the building for, uh, the members to park their golf carts in while they are using the facilities and facilitating the, uh, passing by of other golf carts while they are parked there. So we are before you for a site plan modification to add this building in on the property. And also because we are within the coastal area management zone. We are before you for a coastal area management permit as well. We are about 900 feet, by my estimation, away from any coastal resource with this building, but still fall within that CAM zone. So we are about 64 feet away from a flagged wetland. That wetland is a mowed lawn, uh, being used as a fairway for the golf course. And the next closest wetland is about 310 feet to the east, southeast of the proposed building, and that is more of a viable wetland. So we've already gone before the Wetlands Commission and received their blessing to put this building in this location. We have approval from the Health Department for the proposed septic system. Very minimal grading is involved in, uh, facilitating the installation of this building. Being that it's being cut into that existing filled mound, uh, which was a filled, uh, feature for the golf course many years ago. And again, it shields it from most of the neighbors. It, it just works out in the area that it is. It's a very small 10 by 24 building. Uh, and again, seasonal use, only going to be open during the summertime months. Winterized for the winter and not used during the winter months. So very low impact. So I think that's my presentation. I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Todd. I have a few questions, actually. Do you have an elevation or a drawing of the building, or at least can you tell us what the height will be?
There, there was a preliminary architectural sketch that I think I submitted to the town. Whether Erin has it in the file or not, I don't know. But basically, it's about the size of a, uh, medium sized shed. It's a 10 by 24 building, one floor. It's going to be, you know, an eight foot ceiling with a roof, so it's probably 16, 17 feet tall, I would imagine, maybe 18 tops.
And will it have outdoor lighting?
I do not believe they are proposing lighting on it because during the day, the golfers play golf. At night, they don't play golf. You know, once the sun goes down, they're done, so I have, why have, why have lighting? You know, there, there will probably be interior lighting for a cloudy day. You want to be able to see, so you can wash your hands and suchnot. But, um, to have exterior lighting, that is pretty much a mute point because it will not be used during the nighttime.
Good, good. And then actually, Erin, I have a question, I think, for you. I just wanted to confirm that they didn't need, for this application, there was no need to notify a butters, was there?
There's not for a site.
That's what, yeah, when I check the regulations.
It's not a public area.
Yeah, okay. Just want to confirm that.
Good question, and have the neighbors been called? For their thoughts on having the bathroom put there?
I guess that's a question for the club.
Yeah, 70 feet from, and where's the neighbor, I think?
Yeah, it's pretty close.
It's pretty close. Then there was anyone talk to that neighbor?
I've talked to a lot of neighbors.
I, I'm sorry, what was that question? I, you kind of broke up.
Talk to any of the neighbors? The neighbors who are impacted right there. I think there are a couple of houses in particular that, that back right onto that.
I personally did not talk to any of the neighbors. I don't know whether the club has or not. I, I don't have that information for you. Ken, who's on the call right now, uh, maybe he has an answer to that. If he has spoken with anybody or not, I don't know. I see his, I see he's raising his hand right now.
I, I did raise my hand, but unfortunately, no, I do not have any other information on that. I don't know of any contact made by the club to any of the neighbors.
But, um, the question I would have is, it, it will be visible to some of the neighbors then, is that correct?
It, it will be, uh, but, um, the houses of the neighbors are quite a number of hundreds of feet away. You know, yes, it is, um, close proximity to the property line, but there is substantial vegetation between, uh, the club's property line and the neighbors', uh, houses. So, a-again, we place this in pretty much the most minimal impact area for all of the neighbors, um, based on existing landscaping and vegetation and trees. We don't feel that this is going to be an extreme impact on any of the neighbors at all.
Another question. Um, the, I'm not familiar with the layout of the golf course. But when I tried to find some information, it appears that it's being placed at the backside of the third green before the fourth tee. So is, is that where it is? You, you said it was going like halfway typically to the turnaround. Three starts at back nine. This would appear to be three holes into the course, which, I'm not sure why you put a bathroom. Three holes into your game.
I'm sad, I'm curious. I, I'm not sure of the current numbering of the Ts, but I imagine they're still the same as a plan that we did in, in 2013. We had Ts four and six to the west of this proposed restroom and the green of the green number five just to the east of this. So I think we are right in between the tee of hole number four and the green of number five.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't, isn't there something on the south end of that section of the golf course to the east of Cherry Lane? I seem to recall seeing something down where the frag mighties are. Is that, was that just a porta potty?
I think that's where the, uh, portable restrooms were.
And is, are those being removed or are those staying?
Yes, no, they are.
Removed?
Yes.
Okay.
I can show the GIS map if that helps to kind of.
Yeah, yeah, that would be helpful, thanks.
You to where it is.
One other, just a follow up question. You said there's a significant vegetation between the, the proposed building. And I'm not sure which neighbor that is, but if the first neighbor, um, across from it, that's, I think it's 72 feet away to the property. Before to the corner. Is the vegetation, the clubs?
No, it's the private property.
It's a private property vegetation.
Todd, can I ask, is Jeffrey Squatiero part of the club as well? He has his hand raised.
He is part, he is part of the club as well, yes.
Answer that question, I'll just move him over.
I, I didn't realize he was on as well, but yes, he is.
Okay, all right, so here's sort of a panned out. This, this is, the post road is at the top of the screen. Cherry Lane runs down here. The location is here. Of where this, uh, building is going to be, right, tucks right in here.
So it's off, it's to the right as you're heading down the surface? No, oh, well.
It's on the other side of Cherry Lane, yeah.
Yeah, that's Westworth here, that's the main.
Yeah, yeah.
And the clubhouse, this is behind.
It's, it's right to the backyards of the people on the post road.
Exactly. It's in the back. It's right there. But there is screening, um, I can't see the numbers from here, but it's, I know it's Jane's house and then.
They didn't need to get an approval for the porta potties, I assume?
I don't know. No, I don't think so, because it's not.
Private property.
Yeah.
So this would presumably be an improvement over the porta potty, although I do not know if they are decking, uh, decorated appropriately.
I think it's an improvement to use the fence too, but, um. I have, I have one more question, actually. Which is, has to do with what, how you filled out your application form. There is a, there is a stone wall and a, um, a beautiful bridge going across that little stream that feeds into the pond with huge granite slabs, which I think might be from the historic quarry across the post road. This doesn't impact those at all, though, obviously, does it?
No, the, the stone wall you are referring to is to the northwest of the building and that is about 105 feet away. And we are about 175 feet away from that granite bridge that you were speaking about. And, and none of, none of, uh, not even the utility trenching is anywhere near that. Though, the stone wall is basically to the north side of the wetlands, which we are further away from. And that bridge is to the north side of the pond, which we are about 80 feet to the south of that pond with our utility trenching.
Do you happen to know how old that bridge is?
I have no idea.
It looks old.
Older than me, I'll tell you that much.
The granite is huge, huge slabs. Okay.
So there's a, um, similar facility around the 11th tee, right? How would this proposed structure compare to that in terms of size and style?
I, I am not aware of the facility at the 11th tee. And I do not know the size or look of it. I'm, I don't know anything about that one.
Okay. I could probably answer that. Jeffrey Squatiero, I live at 477 Boston Post Road, and I'm the president of the Madison Country Club right now. I can answer a couple of the questions that came up. Backwards to forwards, this will be about the same size as the, the present restroom that's behind the, the 10th green and next to the 11th tee. That is also a small storage building that has one men's room and one ladies' room in it with some storage in the front. The question was asked about whether we spoke to the neighbors. We have had several meetings with the Cherry Lane Association and, um. Um, we have had several meetings with the Cherry Lane Association and um. Uh, discussed the situation with them. Um, as was described by Todd, um. Our understanding is a lot of the building is going to be hidden by the um, the mound that's already there. But we've also assured them that we will uh plant some native grasses on top of the mound, so that you really won't even notice the building. And we said we'd work with the neighbors in any way that they, if they want us to camouflage it, more than that, we'd be happy to do that. And then lastly, someone asked about the portables. Uh, there were two portable toilets behind the fourth green, which when you saw the. The pictures and the drawings is on the other side of the pond. So behind the fourth green, there was a small raised structure built out of wood that had a platform. And then basically stockade fence to sort of block the view of these portable toilets. Those were only there from basically April until maybe October each year and then removed. So they're not there now, and we won't, we will not hire them again as soon as this building opens. Those, those will be gone, and we'll uh take the structure down.
Thank you.
You talked with the Cherry Lane Association, does that include the folks who live on the Boston Post Road? I would assume it doesn't.
I can't tell you that because I'm not sure, but I know we had a meeting with a, a good number of those, of people who actually walked the property with us. And we showed them our plans. Um, but I don't have, I'm not sure who exactly was there and where they live.
Yeah, because their backyard looks right out onto it, um, whereas Cherry Lane, it might be. But the, you know, it faces the backyard of the, the especially two houses right there. Um, which, yeah, they do have some screening on their own property. But.
My question would be, do, do those Boston Post Road neighbors have a chance to? Comment on this at all, will they?
Not in a site plan application that doesn't have a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, yeah.
And then once we approve the site plan, they can build whatever they propose.
As proposed.
Well, yeah, that's my concern, because there seems to be some ambiguity around, you know, the actual height of the building. If you're going to put storage in there, assuming it's not going underground, then, you know, what's, it's got to be determined, this thing can't be, you know, twenty five feet of it, you know, up. Storage, and so, you know, that, then that's going to stay.
Height is estimated at sixteen to seventeen, but you're not, you're not like digging it into the mound at all. It's. It's, well, it, it's at the level of the, of the paved cart path, I guess. Is that right?
So we'll stick up above grade, yeah.
The, the floor, the, the floor of the bathroom. Is being dug into the existing mound by about three or four feet. On a portion of that structure. So it is being placed kind of tucked into that mound. But not entirely within that mound. So it's not going to look like a subterranean structure. But it will be shielded partially, you know, partially by that mound.
Yep.
Jeffrey, do you have any renderings or information? I know you. There were some preliminary uh concepts for the building, but have you finalized the design of the building?
Um, I'm not aware of anything other than what would have already been submitted. Um, I believe a drawing, and was it done by? John, have you seen that? I think John Matthews, I think John Matthews designed the building, and I thought that was, his sketch was submitted.
There were no architectural drawings submitted with the application.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Aaron. I thought I had given you uh John's preliminary sketches. Uh, with a notation on it that those were not the final design, but that was pretty much the concept sketch. So I apologize if uh, if I'm mistaken. I do have them, but unfortunately, I don't have the means of sharing them right now. Um. I, I can, I can email it to you if you'd like.
I've got some other. Me personally, I'm, we're in the discussion. So for me personally, I think there were three things, there were a couple of questions came up, which were, we didn't have answers to yet, which I understand. And I don't think this is enough. I'm trying to say no to this application, but first, first one is the, if. Seeing what the elevation plan would be for this facility, so you can see what people may or may not be looking at. If you're on Post Road, it's going through your backyard, what are they looking at? So can I do that? The height as far as yours, storage unit stuff. So getting an elevation, the second one was a question on the outdoor lighting. It would, it's obvious that there shouldn't be outdoor lighting, but that's not the answer. The, there was no answer. So I'd like a definitive, there is or is not outdoor lighting, which we don't have to worry about. He thinks there shouldn't be because it's a golf course. He didn't say there is no outdoor lighting.
I, I just took, I just took a look at John's plan, which I will email to Aaron right now. There is no outdoor lighting proposed.
And then the other one would be the uh. So as far as I understand it, the. Cherry Lane, thank you, Cherry Lane. Uh, I buy it every day. Cherry Lane Association would appear to be fine with this. They have an understanding with the club. It's pretty much the mound, blocking the majority of the building from the Cherry Lane residents. But it is facing pretty much directly to the two residents, I think, on West Ward and Post Road. And so what I'd like to see is within that elevation or within. They don't have those property owners just can't say, no, you can't build it. I'm not looking for permission from them. I just want a shielding of light noise orders, particles, weather disturbances, and something else about enjoyment of the. Uh, the neighbors is part of the regs. I think an understanding of what possible screening could be put in place. To assure that the neighbors don't have a direct line of sight. I mean, it's. It can be early in the morning, we're stopping, we're closing, it's fine. I don't think it's responsibility of the neighbors to keep the plants up to block the line of sight. I think it's responsibility of the club to light up, block the sight. So I'd like to see, my request would be to see that. If you all disagree, that's fine. But that's, I'd like, I want to say yes to this. I just want to get a few, button up a few things.
So are you asking for screening or for?
First, we're asking to see what the elevation looks like.
Yeah, what does it look like?
Elevation.
Yes, yes, but as far as the, the neighbors on Boston Post Road.
Sure in some way that the neighbors who are not part of the Cherry Lane Association. They, um, I don't want to say they have the ability to say no to, to kill this project. I would like their. Enjoyment of their property being taken into consideration and assure that proper screening is put in place. That they don't have to maintain. If they want to clear about their property, they should, still shouldn't have to look at this facility. We don't even know what the city look like, it could be beautiful.
But it does face right.
First thing I noticed is seventy two feet from the property line, another thirty forty feet from the step back. It's not that close, but it's still there.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure that is.
With a parking lot for carts.
Okay, I can share with you.
So. If I, if, if I may. Um, I emailed Aaron John Matthews' sketch. And I also just took a look at Google Earth. And the closest house would be, um. Jane Reports' house at. Uh, let me get back here, at five twenty four Boston Post Road. And I'm estimating a little over three hundred feet from the back of her house. To this restroom facility. And there is also a slight hillside and a large vegetated backyard. With mature trees between her house and this building. Um, the, the next closest house that does not have the benefit of trees. Would be uh Lance Forrest. Uh, garage, which his garage is between his house and his garage. But the garage is at three hundred and twenty feet. And the back of his house, which is shielded by his garage to this structure, is at about four hundred feet.
This is giving you a, a rough section.
Yep, you're right, it looks like a shed.
It's not a, a tall structure. This area here in the back, Todd, is that the rear grade, the hill, the slope?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, where are you looking at?
Uh, all the way to the right side here. Can you see my cursor moving or is that not?
No, I don't see your cursor moving.
All the way to the right, above A four. It, and that footing, is that, that's the adjacent grade?
Looks like it.
On that side.
I, I, I don't see your cursor, but um. You know, ba- basically the backside of the, the backside, the Cherry Lane side will have about a four foot wall.
That's what I, that's what that is.
Yeah, yeah. And I see that he has on the sketch now, I'm seeing it, it's about thirteen feet tall. He has reg thirteen feet plus or minus, yep.
That's much better.
Aaron, is this not part of the record?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, sure. I mean, it would have been great if you guys had talked to the Boston Post Road neighbors, I think, as well. It would feel a little more comfortable, but.
Aaron, can you pull up that um, the site plan, but the overview with the.
So this is into a hill that is on the south and it faces the line.
No, I'm sorry, not that one.
The survey?
Yeah, the survey, that's it. Show me the contact, you see where it says stop file, the left of stop file, that the line is seventy two feet to that property line.
Seventy two feet to that. To which one? Which way are you looking?
I thought there was a top line.
No.
No, that's just the rear property line there.
The house is quite a bit further up.
All right.
Yeah, that's just the property line, that the house.
So I could show you that lot on the.
Yeah.
This property line.
And there's school.
That's much further than I thought.
Yes, it's pretty far. There's, there is a lot of plant. Screening. I mean, they put in, Jane put in a nice garden back there.
Yeah, that's okay.
If I'm, if I can, um, I just want to point out, as Jeff said. As Jeff said, that with regard to the neighbors that uh, uh, the club did meet with and walk the property with. Uh, there was an assurance made to them that the club would do what was necessary to screen their view. The, the same thing would apply to, to those two, one or two. Property owners on the post road, I, I would assume, right? I mean, we, i- i- it's, it's not going to be visible if, if nobody wants it visible, or at least not fully visible. Um, so I, I think uh, that can certainly be, be, uh, you know.
Yeah, and I mean, I just would add, it's Jeff Squatiero again, I would add that. The, the members don't want this thing to stick out like a sore thumb either, either, so we're going to be, we want it to, to sort of blend in with the. And if that means we have to do a little more planning to keep the people on the post road happy, we'd be happy to do that as well.
Good.
Great, thanks. Okay, well, thank you. It's helpful to have the height at about thirteen feet, that it's kind of tucked into the hill. And that you're open to making adjustments if landscaping needs to be done later. That's great.
So, okay, I'll question, that, that's a draft drawing.
It's not the. Yeah.
How close does their actual building have to be to that draft drawing? It does not have to be anywhere near that. It's a draft.
On, on a, on a building this small, on, on a building this small, we're not looking at. Going from his thirteen feet proposed height to, you know. If anything, it might be fourteen feet tall, but maybe only twelve feet tall. Um, but it's a small building, again, it's like a medium sized shed. It's not going to be a overly obtrusive structure. Um, we are limited on your approval of a ten by twenty four building. Uh, you know, we are not looking at, we're, we're looking at building a restroom facility. Uh, with no second floor. We don't need the second floor for storage, we just need it so rainwater and snow flows off of it. So it doesn't need to be a steep roof for storage or anything above it. So pretty much what you are looking at is what it's going to be.
We can include that plan in the approval.
Yeah, as per that sketch.
Right.
Said the building should be constructed along the lines of that plan without any major deviations. Any major deviations would require them to come back to us, blah, 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 blah. Yeah, I just like having it.
Some deadlines.
I think, I, I'm with that.
Yeah.
And that'll, that should take care of us.
Make a motion?
I, I did just want to add that the coastal site plan, um, there are soil and erosion control measures shown. On, on the site, it's been accessed is detailed, uh, how the construction access. Um, and uh, we did receive comments back from D T as well, just so that. Everybody has had a chance to see.
Aaron, did you draft, um?
It's in the staff report.
Oh, I see. I can bring it up. So Bob, do you want to just add a couple of conditions?
Put the condition number three.
Sure.
Yeah.
Script to be built for the submitted drawings, any major deviations.
Motion to approve with.
Yes.
Can I do that?
Sure.
Motion to approve with the added uh. Item around the building uh size and height. And uh, similar to the drawings, draft drawings, yeah.
Okay, and so this is using Aaron's draft resolution plus the addition of a third condition about the sketch. I think we're all comfortable with that, and this is for just, this is for the site time review. Vote again on that coastal site plan.
It, it's all, that's all in one.
It's all as one, okay. Oh, yeah, I see, Aaron, great. Should we read it or can we just refer?
All right, the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission approves application twenty four dash zero one Cherry Lane, that's twenty six, line thirty seven dash one. Forty four and forty five, zone R two, owner Madison Country Club, applicant Anderson. Forty-four and forty-five, zone R two, owner Madison Country Club, applicant Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates. Site plan review modification, coastal site plan review to construct ten foot by twenty-three accessory restroom building. Associate utility set system sign improvements as shown on site title. Inland wetlands restricted activity, coastal area management plan. Portion of property of Madison Country Club, Inc., Cherry Lane, Madison, Connecticut. By Anderson Engineering and Surveying Associates. Dated January fourth, twenty twenty-four, with the following conditions. One, that the zoning enforcement officer be notified at least forty-eight hours prior to commencement of any regulated activity. Two, that the erosion and sedimentation controls be installed prior to any site disturbance. And be maintained for future construction activities. And until the site is sufficiently stabilized, to satisfaction zoning enforcement officer. Three, structure to be built per submitted drawings. In the event that changes to the approved plan to require it as a result of other agency permitting to support the proposed activity. The Madison Planning and Zoning Commission reserves the right to review said changes and may require modification of this approval. This approval is made based upon the finding that proposed use is a. Use is a permitted use in the district and that the standards for that persist. Conditions specified by the regulations have been met. The commission further finds proposal consistent with all applicable goals and policies in the Coastal Management Act. And section twenty-five of the Madison zoning regulations. Yeah, its effort to maintain adequate soil and erosion controls during construction activities. Reduce potential impacts onsite. It is revolved as February twenty-ninth.
Hey, Aaron. If, if I'm, if I may. Um, since the date of that plan. There were two revisions made for the health department. Has nothing to do with grading, the site plan, location of anything. It just had to do with health department. Uh, notes and their requirements of notes and so forth to do with the septic system. Did not change anything due with the plan. Well, we revised the plan on January twenty-third. And February sixth, so I didn't know if that needed to be noted in this approval or not. Uh, again, it has nothing to do with. Anything that you guys are approving tonight had to do with the health department. I just wanted to make this clean.
Thanks, good, and we got, we got notification that they approved it, so that's great. Okay, uh, any further discussion? I think, did we get a second?
You needed a second.
A second, first, sorry. Bob O'Connor and further discussion? We covered it. All in favor?
Thank you.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Alright, moving right along. Next item on our agenda is twenty-four dash oh-two Surf Club Road, map thirty-six, lot fifty, zone R two. Owners of town in Madison, applicant West Cotton Mapes, Inc., site plan review and coastal site plan review to install the athletic field lighting. Consisting of six light poles on the Nelson Little League fields. Thank you guys for waiting so long. We lost a couple of baseball players maybe, but. Do you have a presentation?
We do, uh, so Ray.
Ray's joining, he's coming over.
Okay, great.
Sorry. Drag him behind here.
I can give you a little um. Set you up where you are.
Tell us who, tell us who you are and where you live.
Austin Hall, Director of Beach and Recreation. Uh, so as you pull into Surf Club, pass, pass the gate guard hut. There's a Little League field to your right, and then there's a Little League field set back from there as well. These are the two fields in discussion.
Thank you.
Hi Ray, are you screen sharing today, or would you like me to?
Whatever pleases you. I, I could certainly uh, call up the plan and share my screen if that's easier.
That's fine, sure.
Certainly, um. Let's do that.
And Ray, could you identify yourself too, please?
Yes, um. Uh, evening, my name is Raymond Payer, I'm a professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, uh, Vice President of Engineering at. West Cotton Mapes located at one forty-two Temple Street, New Haven, Connecticut. I'm the project engineer for this project before you. Um, working with Austin to prepare plans uh, for approval and for uh, construction purposes. Uh, as submitted, uh, hopefully that you could see my screen, I'm not sure, it says Nelson Little League Fields Light Lighting Project cover sheet. Is that visible?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
Wonderful. Alright, uh, so basically as Austin had pointed out, the location, uh, off of Surf Road, I'm sure you're familiar. Um, here's a, an aerial background, uh, along with uh, uh, AutoCAD uh, line work at top of it. Uh, the two Nelson Field, uh, here Nelson Field one, the larger field. And, and Nelson Field two, the smaller field, uh, baseball fields. Uh, the project i- is, as Aaron had mentioned, uh, the six light poles. Uh, currently, the football field is, as you may know, is illuminated. And now that there's request desire to have uh, the, the Little League ball fields illuminated for, for play as well. Uh, the six light poles, um, and I'll point them out. Um, but let's start here, uh, A, A one. Uh, along the uh, thir- outside of the fence of the third baseline of Nelson Field one. And then A two is over here, uh, outside of the first.
Can't see.
Center field.
Okay, uh, shall I enlarge it? Do you see my cursor or no?
We can't, we can't, yeah, your cursor's a little light.
It's there, it looks correct.
Oh, I can't see.
I can't see.
Perhaps. Uh, any, any luck with that? No?
We, we can stand and point if that's helpful.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah. I apologize. Well, A, A one on the uh, be, uh, to the left uh, of third, uh, between third base in the outfield and A two. On the right field base.
A two.
Is that, is the ball on, on your end?
Yep, we're shown.
Thank you. Yeah, and then, then B one further down the third baseline, uh, uh, of Field one, and then B two on the first baseline. Uh. B three is the farthest one to the, to the north, and that's for Nelson Field two. Along, along the uh, first baseline of, um. And then the last light pole is C one, which is in center field. Uh, of, of Nelson Field one. Okay, sorry to make you jump around. Thank you for the assistance. So the, 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 the poles themselves are, are sixty feet, and, and the one in the s- center field is, is seventy feet. Uh, Musco lighting, sports field lighting, they, they do lighting for, you know. The, the football field they had done, and, and many, many uh, collegiate and. Uh, recreational and, and uh, s- sports fields throughout the state and elsewhere. Uh, we've worked with them at multiple projects in the past as well. Uh, L E D lighting, uh, pinpoint lighting, they, they, they focus each of the lights. Uh, to illuminate the field appropriately for the field to play without spillage. Um, the center, uh, C one has lights that point in the direction of both fields. And, and the other poles that I mentioned have just single um, stanchions with heads that point just to the respective field. The, the illumination is, is in your CAM package. Uh, the, the other component of the project is, is uh, to run power uh, to these poles. And, and that's denoted by the, the line with the E in it. And, and we're, we're running underground conduit from the electrical utility building. Uh, which is uh, in the lower left-hand corner of the plan before you, over near the basketball courts. Uh, you'll see utility building, it's a, it's a rectangular. Uh, box symbol. A- and then from that comes out the E, which is the underground conduit, and it. Um. Traverses the, the uh, the grounds to each of the pole locations a- as you see on the plan before you.
Um, this, this is all single phase one-twenty V A C?
Uh, it's, it's, it's three-phase four, four-eighty volt, uh. Yeah. That's what's available, and that's what, uh. The, the next drawing is uh, all of the. Um, erosion sedimentation control measures and. Uh, silk fence and, and hay bales and so forth. Uh, there's not going to be uh, s- significant disturbance, obviously, the. The two-inch conduit is only down a couple of feet, but you know, there'll be measures to, to contain soils. And, and then the augured holes for the light pole bases will go down uh, thirteen, fourteen feet in that range. And each of those locations, we've got um, uh. More substantial erosion control measures, a silk fence and so forth, a- and containment areas to, to contain the soil so as to not have any um. Any environmental impact. Um, and then, then upon completion, um, working with Austin's uh, forces will uh. Uh, reestablish the, the lawn, the, the, the grass areas. Uh, of the disturbance. And uh, that's, that's basically the, the, the project. More than happy to answer questions uh, that you may have.
I got a dumb one. So I'm assuming that you've got poles tall enough, downward facing enough, such that you won't cause blindness to the others. The other field versus one field playing at the same time.
Uh, correct, well, you know, I defer to Musco, but they've got a, a, a very robust lighting plan where they. With their technology and the LEDs, they, they actually like laser point. Each, each of the heads to, to properly illuminate, so, so that has been um, taken account, they're taking into account.
So there are more spotlights than you are floods, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, exactly, they, they aim them, they actually physically go out and, and, and aim each, each of the heads and. Yes.
The question is for Austin. So what, how late would these be left on, or how, how does the timing work?
So the lights on Strong Field from. Say, April to November. Are on till ten, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night. Um. I don't see that being the case with these fields, these are Little League, so kids up to age twelve. Um, they're not going to be out at eleven o'clock having games at that time. So once the final game or practice is over, the lights will be shown on that.
Great. And are you hoping to get this installed by the beginning day?
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
Any other questions or comments?
Again, it's coastal site plan, um, Ray kind of went over the E N S controls, that was really the. Main concern is for temporary disturbance during construction, um, mainly to the tidal wetlands adjacent on that east side. Uh, it kind of drops off the bank on, on, outside of the outfield there. Of Nelson, that's Nelson one.
Yeah.
The big one.
So.
Yeah, and so, so there won't be access that way for machinery, it's all coming in off of the emergency access behind Strong Field. Um, as, and, and Ray, maybe you can just kind of detail the um. You know. Drilling down for um, the. Basically foundations for these lights, you're going down about thirteen feet anticipating you're going to have to de-water. As part of that process, and so all of that has been centrally located and shown on the plans to fall between Strong and Nelson Field. Um, to keep that as far away as possible from the tidal wetlands, as well as um, all the drainage structures uh, within that. Sports campus will be protected. As well. Um, the only other comment from the state, um, a- aside from E N S controls was that this is located in a flood zone. And that uh, clearly, you know, as part of their permitting process, uh, comply with FEMA standards.
We get it done before hurricane season.
Well, why did the plan suddenly came to remove some trees? So there will be no trees.
Oh, yeah, that, that's changed.
If I may comment to that, uh, Ray Payer, once again. Um, and, and that was on my part of being an engineer and overly conservative concerned with. Equipment and the need to uh, excavate, but talking with Austin, um, that is not the case, I've actually revised the plans. Uh, no trees will be removed or disturbed. You know, there, there'll be a, 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 either hand dig or, or small equipment to um. T- traverse the area past the trees and the roots. Um, a- and, and save the trees, so that's. All, all, all the, all the reference to tree and stumping has been removed from the plans, the, the current plans that I have, that was brought to my attention. Um, so we will not, there's no need, nor, nor will we uh, have that uh, occur on the project.
Good. Thanks for raising that, John. Any other questions? Could we have a motion?
I'll provide the motion.
As drafted, I want to go ahead and read, there's a. Draft resolution. For both, this is for the.
The Madison Planning and Zoning Commission approves application twenty-four dash zero two Surf Club Road, map thirty-six, lot fifty, zone R two. Owner of town in Madison, applicant West Cotton Mapes Incorporated. Site plan review and coastal site plan review to install athletic. Field lighting consisting of six light poles on the Nelson League Field. As shown on plan, Nelson Little League Field Sliding Project eighty-seven Surf Club Road, Madison, Connecticut, by West Cotton Mapes. Incorporated, dated, dated January eighth, twenty twenty-four, sheets S P dash one dash E S dash one. She's total. With the following conditions, one, the zoning enforcement officer be notified at least forty-eight hours prior to commencement of any regulated activity. Two, that all erosion and sedimentation controls be installed prior to any site disturbance should be maintained for duration of construction activities. And until the site is sufficiently stabilized to satisfaction of zoning enforcement officer. Three, that all construction shall comply with FEMA standards, as we mentioned before. Four, prior any site activity, the applicant shall submit revised plans eliminating what that's. Only treatment. Correct. In the event that changes to the approved plans or required as a result of other agency permitting to support proposed activity. The Madison Planning and Zoning Commission reserves the right to review said changes and may require modification of this approval. This approval was made based upon the finding that the proposed use is a permitted use in the district. And that standards prerequisites and conditions specified by the regulations have been met. The commission further finds that the proposal consists. Consistent with all applicable laws and policies in the Coastal Management Act. And section twenty-five of the Minnesota zoning regulations. The applicant's effort to maintain adequate soil erosion controls during construction activities. Reduce potential impacts onsite and adjacent coastal resources. That can be this approval is February twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four.
Second? Andy, further discussion? Janet, you with us?
Um, all good. Alright, I'm with you and all good.
So all in favor?
Raise your hand, Janet.
It's unanimous, it approved.
Yeah.
Great, thank you guys.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Two more fields.
I think you're gonna have empty audience.
Okay, so. The other memorizations and receipts need to be scheduled for um, future meetings.
Aaron, we get, so yeah, just one update, Garnet Park. Um, we did receive an extension to allow the applicant to go through the C O P process with the state. Um, and so that extension is uploaded into the filed documents. Um, and uh, recommendation would be to table that to the April eighteenth meeting.
Motion to table. It's by. On, for the second. Any discussion? All in favor, April eighteenth? Approved, okay, and uh, twenty-four dash oh-four thirty-seven Kent Road.
Excuse me, this is a coastal site plan application as well, uh, was referred to deep, um, and in. To allow, you know, in an effort to allow their thirty-five day referral process. Um, uh, staff recommends tabling this to the March twenty-first.
Okay, motion to be tabled to March twenty-first?
Yeah.
Thank you, O'Connor and Sarah. Favor. First, we're opening up that meeting, but that's okay. Twenty-three dash forty-seven thirty-one Stony Lane, they've requested a ninety-day extension for, to file their Mylar.
Yes, so with any subdivision, the record sub- the signed record subdivision map needs to be filed on the land records. Uh, within ninety days, statutes allow for up to two ninety-day extensions. Of that uh, time clock, the applicant is seeking uh, their first extension uh, to file that.
Okay, good.
I did give.
So there's a res- a draft resolution?
A draft resolution for that as well, I can screen share that if that helps.
All right.
Andy's making a motion. Yeah.
The subdivision was approved on November sixteenth, twenty twenty four. The applicant is requesting a ninety day extension to file a record subdivision map on the land. Following draft resolution is offered. Voted that the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission approve a ninety day extension to file the signed recorded subdivision Mylar. Madison Land Records for application number twenty three dash forty seven. Thirty one Stony Lane, map thirty six lot twenty five dash two, zone R one, owner, Barbary Twelve LLC. Applicant Thomas A. Stevens and Associates Inc., sub lot division within open space conservation division.
Six lot.
Six.
Okay, great. Motion, a second, please? Any further discussion? All in favor? Is approved. Always happy to. Um twenty four dash oh five plus a coastal site plan, sixty four Surf Club Road map thirty six lot fifty zone, oh, this would be R two, Aaron. Are you two?
Oh, that's an old, it, it, that's been updated.
Has been updated, okay, great. Um town Madison site time modification application and coastal site plan application for reconstruction of the natural turf youth football field area of the exchange field complex. Need a motion to table that to March twenty first. Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Able to March twenty first. Uh twenty four dash oh six thirteen thirty nine and thirteen forty one Boston Post Road map thirty one lots thirty four and thirty four. Dash oh one zone C. Owner H P S Associates thirteen thirty nine Boston Post Road LLC, thirteen forty one Boston Post Road LLC and thirteen forty three Boston Post Road LLC. Um applicant thirteen thirty nine and thirteen forty one Boston Post Road LLC, special exception permit per section six point one point two point two and six point fifteen point two. And coastal site plan application to construct two, three story mixed use buildings with commercially uses on the first floor. And twelve residential units on the upper floors. Twenty four units total and associated site improvements. We haven't seen that yet.
No.
Schedule a public hearing for March twenty first, twenty twenty four. And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? That's a public hearing. Okay, twenty four dash oh seven sixty three Middle Beach Road West map fifteen month twenty four zone R four. Owner Earl Tucker, third family trust LLC applicant Ronald Bosmer, coastal site plan application to permit construction of terraces. And retaining walls within twenty five feet of a coastal resource that is being tabled to March twenty first, twenty twenty four. Andy, second?
Sure.
Any discussion?
Just, Aaron, I couldn't pull that information up on the agenda.
It's linked now. I saw that. It's all correct, yes. It's a live link now. I, I'm not sure what happened to that.
It was like it was a separate login. I tried it.
Yeah.
I know, and when I went into the document center, all the documents were uploaded and said they were published, so it must have been something with the link, but I reconnected it.
Which, okay. Great. Do we go to that? Okay, um so, Aaron, do you want to talk about the regulation amendment for child care homes?
Sure, um I did send you a staff memo with some draft language. Uh this is fairly simple, actually. Uh the statutes changed. Uh the statutes previously required that uh the zoning regulations cannot treat a family childcare home any differently than a single family. Uh or a private home, a single family dwelling. Um and our regulations were consistent with that statute. Um however, the regulation, uh the statute changed uh. Associated with Public Act twenty three dash one forty two and and caught a lot of municipalities off guard. When the CEOs of the municipalities received uh notice from uh Office of Policy and Management in November. Asking for the CEOs to certify that the local zoning regulations or ordinances are in compliance uh with the Public Act. Uh treating not just family childcare homes, but also group childcare homes, no differently than a single family dwelling. Um and so when we went through our certification process with O P M, you know, I did a search of our zoning code and it doesn't. It doesn't quite say that. So, um so we, we did, uh and I gave you a copy of, of the certification that uh First Electman, uh First Electwoman Lyons submitted to O P M. Uh indicating that we would be updating our regulations to be in compliance. Um and and it, our fix is quite simple, actually. Um it specifically references uh section three point three, which is our residential zone. And it's three point three B, uh the language would read uh. The following accessory uses uh when carried on by a resident of the premises. Uh our permitted uses uh with a zoning permit. Um and letter B is family or group childcare home that complies with the standards set forth by the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood. So that would encompass both of those uses. Um and then further uh in section nineteen, which is our definition section of daycare center, there was reference excluding. Um the family uh child, uh family daycare homes from that. Um but I just uh cleaned that language up to include group um and to match the terminology. In the statute. So those are the two sections. The only other residential section that this would apply to is the rural residential section. Um but in their permitted uses, it just bumps you back to section three of the residential zone, so there's no actual changes needed in the rural district. The, the section three would be sufficient. Um so the next process would be if you're comfortable with this fix. Um we'll begin the referral process and post it in the town clerk's office, send it to our regional council of government. Uh for the regional planning commission to take a look at, we'll refer it to our neighboring towns. And schedule for a public hearing in March, if that works.
Great, so the regional meeting is the fourteenth of March. And by the way, other municipalities are having to do the same thing. I've seen other town sewers do regional meeting, so.
And lucky for our town, our CEO sent me the letter. There are some communities that I've heard uh through the state. That have heard this from uh either uh the Planning Association or Connecticut Association of Zoning Officers. And some folks said, I never even knew about that from our CEO, so we're at least on top of it. At this point.
We're doing fine. Okay, so um we need to schedule a public hearing for it, though, Aaron?
Yes, it's a regulation amendment, so it does require a public hearing.
Text amendment. For March twenty first, twenty twenty four, add a motion? Thank you, second?
Whoever you like.
And any further discussion? John, do you have any questions about it? Okay, great. Janet? Are we good? All in favor? March twenty first? All right, approval of minutes, Secretary Duzza.
Sure, February first, my name is only Christian, the regularly meeting members present Reinhardt, Duzza, O'Connor, Morgan. Motion to approve. Well, second?
Second.
John, any comments or discussion? All look good to me. Vote to approve. John, thank you.
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there.
Okay, on Tuesday, February sixth, the discussion meeting members present Reinhardt, O'Connor, Snow, Budner, Rubin, Peckinpah, and Morgan. Motion to approve. Michael, second? Bob, any comments or discussions? Looked like a very productive and efficient meeting. Vote to approve. Okay, everybody, but me, I was not there.
Thank you. Um remarks, I just wanted to mention something really quickly that I heard on NPR last night on Marketplace. Um there was a sec, there was a piece about zoning and Sarah Bronin talked about the National Zoning Atlas. Aaron, you know about this? And she used Connecticut as an example, so she just mentioned. That we have, this is about housing and zoning and we have three, about three million people in our state, hundred and eighty three zoning jurisdictions. Ninety one percent are single family housing. Two percent is multi-family, so I just thought that was interesting. Um and that's sort of a segue to say, go to the, we should attend the February twenty ninth housing. Session.
Is that in this room or?
It's going to be right across the hall in the Hammond asset room and via Zoom. Um so the Affordable Housing Committee again is welcoming uh members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Selectmen. And just the public in general to uh have a meeting um. To talk about housing, to introduce themselves, uh the Affordable Housing Plan, uh some of the things that they've been up to over the last year. And how they hope to collaborate with um other leaders.
Very good.
Great, such as yourselves. Um and I had one other.
Sure.
Update, uh we received word uh yesterday that um Judge O'Hanlon has dismissed. Uh the uh appeal that was filed uh from Mr. Marzatelli against the Planning and Zoning Commission with respect to thirty five Cottage Road. And so. Your good news stands.
We are done.
Some good news.
You are done. So both, both appeals, um the inland wetlands appeal uh from the uh. Interveners, I believe, or or the adjacent property owners, that was also dismissed. Um so uh the judge, Judge O'Hanlon upheld um both the inland wetlands and the planning and zoning commissions decisions.
And is the property for sale?
The thirty five Cottage Road is not for sale.
Okay, sorry, I was thinking of Scotland.
Yes, no.
Got it, thank you.
And Scotland Road was withdrawn, that appeal was withdrawn.
Oh, okay, that's what it is.
Yeah, so that means your approval stands.
And regarding cottage, is that why there's been no, no activity there?
Yes, it's been.
That's interesting, okay, good. Yay.
Yes, we're making progress, we're good.
Any other comments? Could I have a motion to adjourn? Discussion, all in favor? Adjourned at eight thirty seven.
Thanks, Janet, thanks for Cal. Bye bye.